Good evening, I'd like to call the school committee meeting of January 8th, 2018 to order. Would you please all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped by our local high school television studio for further broadcast on Dartmouth Community Television and also the high school YouTube site. Also, if you have any cell phones, pagers, beepers, electronic devices, if you would kindly put them on silent or shut them off, I would greatly appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Dr. Shannon Jenkins?
Is ill tonight and not here, that's why you're stuck with me as the chair.
John News?
I'm here.
Kathleen Amroth?
Here.
Dr. Carol Karafotis?
Have not heard from...
Christopher Oliver?
Here.
Thank you. At this point in time, we've allocated a few minutes for anyone in the audience for public comment on any of the items that are on the agenda tonight. If anyone wishes to speak on any of the agenda items, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, we just asked for your name. Okay. Don't all speak at once. I know. Okay, that being done, first order of business will be the approval of the regular session minutes of December 11th, 2017.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Oliver.
A second.
Second by Ms. Amroth. On the motion, any discussion? Chair here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Dr. Karafotis? Dr. Karafotis? Dr. Giffett? Talk about the spotlight on kids.
Oh, yes, we're really excited tonight. You can see we have a ton of students here, I can't even believe it. But from Quinn Elementary School, I believe our principal, Mr. Granfield, will come up and tell us what's happening and what all these students have to tell us about tonight. Yay! That's a great crowd. Oh, my goodness.
Guys, just come all the way around for right now, okay? All right. So, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for this opportunity to share our spotlight on kids here at Quinn tonight. If you recall, last year was our first year having the fifth grade peer leaders. Our presentation last year consisted of the peer leaders speaking as to why they wanted to be a peer leader, as well as the different initiatives that they had brainstormed and wanted to take on to support both the school and the community. This year, we thought it would be a great opportunity to once again have our fifth grade peer leaders present. This year, I have asked them to present on what it means to be a PBIS role model at Quinn School. We are very fortunate to have roughly 25 of our 37 fifth grade peer leaders able to attend tonight. Last week, we broke the students into three groups, and each group was given a sentence stem to respond to. The first one was, "At Quinn, we know that we are following expectations because..." The second group was given, "At Quinn School, to be a PBIS role model," aye. And the third one was, "Vertical teams are..." And then last Wednesday, each of the three groups met in the community room and started brainstorming ideas. So, as you can see on the whiteboards, we broke into three different teams, and then Ms. Y., Ms. Thomas, and I stepped back, and we let the students kind of sequence and break down exactly what those three sentence stems mean to them. And then, I need to give all the credit in the world to all the students that are here tonight, as well as the peer leaders that were not able to attend, and recognize what they've been able to do over the last four days. Last Wednesday, when we heard about the potential storm, the students decided to create a Google Doc to respond to the sentence stems. And as a result, all 37 of the peer leaders were an active part of the presentation that you'll be seeing tonight. Whether they are present or not, they've been able to contribute to the presentation by editing the Google Doc from their homes. And to be a peer leader, we look for students that are responsible and take initiative. And all of our peer leaders have demonstrated that over the last four days by being an active part of this presentation that we have for you tonight. And so with that, I am very pleased to welcome up our first group.
Good evening, my name is Adriana Naria.
Emma Carvallo.
Avery Hallstead.
And Michael Petty. Today we'll be answering the common question of, "At Quinn, we know we are following expectations because we earn."
Here is an example of a coin.
Thanks.
This is an example of a class rocket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an example of a grade level rocket.
Well, as Quinn students, we know we are following the Quinn School expectations when we earn coins. We can receive them from teachers, bus drivers, staff, and even students on Fun Fridays. When you get one, it says, "You have been caught being good." But you need to also have integrity and do good things even though, even while, nobody is watching. When you use integrity, you will know that once you have done it, it will make you feel like you should do it even more.
Each grade has its own rocket. The grade rockets are different. Kindergarten has shapes and paint, first grade has splatter paint, second grade has zebra print, third grade has cheetah print, fourth grade has flames, and fifth grade has dragon tape. But in some classes, they have other things. For example, in Mr. Far's class, we have a minion. But the point is, so you can put your coins in the rocket, and as a class. If you acquire 40 coins, you will get a whole class incentive, like pajama day, extra recess, movie day, and so on. Once each class gets enough coins to fill the grade level rocket, the whole grade gets an incentive. Then the whole school gets one, two, 1,200 coins, everyone gets an incentive. Not only do you get a reward for your positive behavior, but it makes you feel good. Not only as, "Yes, I did this, so what?" But as making yourself and others feel like they are part of the school. Being a part of Jameson Quinn Elementary School doesn't mean being nice and caring. It also means being considerate and thoughtful of others, not only your grade level peers, but your classmates as well. Coins will also mean that you showed your best effort, and not just physically, but mentally.
Some ways you can earn coins are live by the three Rs. I respect you, I respect me, and I respect everything I see. Do your best work and comprehend ideas or what you're doing. When you help a teacher in your free period, such as recess time, participating in presentations, group activities, even just morning meeting. Help others by helping them with work, helping them clean up, or you can ask to do something with them. Follow directions or look at the teacher when they are talking, never give up.
Hi, my name is Kate Sullivan.
Hi, my name is Adrian Acosta.
My name is Mohammed Ajazi.
Hi, my name is Aubrey D'Souza.
Hi, my name is Kyla Martin.
Hi, my name is McKenna Perrer.
Hi, my name is Stephen Wei.
Hi, my name is Colby Edgcombe.
Our group is highlighting PBIS rallies and what it takes to be a PBIS role model. At Quinn School, to be a PBIS role model, I meet the expectations in school, like respect myself, others, and property. We also have monthly assemblies, which tells the character traits we have to follow for that month.
These are character traits taught by our teachers and outreach workers, like Ms. Bloom, Ms. Goams, and Ms. Martin. In second step classes, for example, a couple where empathy, respect, reliability, and flexibility.
Then, in the assembly, you honor kids who have modeled those expectations. We have two different types of assemblies, one with our vertical teams, or another with our grade level. Also, families can come and surprise a kid, child, if he or she gets chosen as the role model.
Students receive a certificate and get recognized as to why they were, why they were chosen at the assembly. They also get their picture taken, a keychain, earn extra recess, and get to sign the pride book in the main office.
It is an honor to be chosen as a PBIS role model, and something you should be proud of.
Here is an example of a video that was created by students about respect that was shown at the first PBIS rally.
Respect is when you treat others the way they want to be treated, and include others when they are feeling down.
Listening to your teacher.
Being respectful means to listen to your teacher.
Respect is good to people because they do nice things.
Respect is sharing toys.
Using kind words.
Respect is when you treat others the way you want to be treated.
Respect is treating people like how you want to be treated.
Respect is walking in other people's shoes.
Cheer people up when they feel blue.
Respect is raising your hand and waiting to be called on.
Respect is beautiful because kids do good things and respect everything they see around them.
Being kind to your friends.
Respect is caring about a treasure.
Respect is being nice.
Means when you're listening, your eyes are looking at the speaker, it can be a teacher or a student, and your ears can be listening, and your mouths are closed.
Treating things properly.
Respect is being a kind friend to others.
Respect is when you be kind to others.
Helping friends when they need you, like when they get hurt.
Being kind to your friends.
Respect is for being kind and sharing with friends.
Listening to the teacher.
Respect is treating others kindly.
Respect to me is being kind to others.
Respect is thinking and acting in a positive way that shows others you care about their feelings. Respect is being polite and considerate no matter what.
Respect is something you do, like if you're on a field trip, and you have a leader or a chef room, you have to respect your leader or chef room.
Bringing people to the most.
Respect is letting other people join in your, at your game at recess time.
Respect is to be kind.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Vasconcellus.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Santos.
Hi, my name is Ella Houlihan.
Hi, my name is Sydney Leary.
Hi, my name is Ava Rose Casera.
Hello, my name is Nora Burke.
Hi, my name is Catherine Cheesebro. Our group will be highlighting how vertical teams support PBIS initiatives. Vertical teams are made up of, one class from each grade level is in each vertical team meeting. Each vertical, each team has a team color, red team, green team, blue team, orange team, and yellow team.
Morning meetings are every six weeks in the gym. When we are at the meetings, it gives you a chance to see your past teachers or following your teachers you may have in the future. At the meetings, we will sometimes do a Go-Noodle, something to relax your brain.
We can also have a chance to meet older or younger kids, depending on what grade you are in. The teachers have a chance to talk to each other about their students and classroom activities. Students can interact with each other to make new friends.
Students and teachers are allowed to cheer the vertical teams on to make us feel encouraged. We have a PBIS rally once a month, and sometimes out with our vertical teams to honor our role models from each grade level. We are encouraged to wear our team color on the day of our meetings to show support to our team. In conclusion, we have created a video that showcases the first round of vertical teams.
It might seem crazy what I'm about to say. Sunshine, she's here, you can take a break.
Give us an O! O! Give us a G! G! Give us an R! R! Give us an E! E! Give us a double N! E! Give us a M! M! What's that spell? R! One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth, because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you, because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do. Hey, go! Bring me down, can't none bring me down, your love is true, it bring me down. If I were to the Quinn School, I'll tell you what I'd be. If I were to the Quinn School, orange would be me. And as you pass me by, this is what you hear me cry. O-R-A-N-G-E, orange is the T for me. 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 Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like that's what you want to do. Hey, go! Bring me down, can't none bring me down, your love is true, it bring me down. If I were to the Quinn School, I'll tell you what I'd be. If I were to the Quinn School, orange would be me. And as you pass me by, this is what you hear me cry. O-R-A-N-G-E, orange is the T for me. 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 Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like a room without a roof. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you feel like happiness is the truth. Because I'm happy. Clap along if you know what happiness is to you. Because I'm happy. Clap...
And so, once again, I can't give enough credit to all the peer leaders, because as I mentioned earlier, they took from brainstorming ideas on the whiteboard Wednesday afternoon to putting together those writing pieces that you heard tonight, all on their own via Google Doc. So, they did an absolutely amazing job. And originally, this is where we were going to conclude our presentation, but the peer leaders had actually asked on Wednesday afternoon if they could do an abbreviated version for you all. They did a remix to one of the Go-Noodles, and some of those videos, you could see that all the students were up and dancing. We usually display a Go-Noodle, and then the entire K through 5 dance. So, they've put together a short one with a remix that they would like to do for you today. You can leave all the papers in the center.
Parents, if you, guardians, if you want to stand up and take pictures and that, please, by all means. Yeah. Go ahead.
If I were not a peer leader, I'll tell you what I'd be. If I were not a peer leader, carpenter would be me. And as you pass me by, this is what you hear me cry. I'm driving down the lane, totally insane. I'm driving down the lane, totally insane. Two by four, now nail it to the floor, bam! Two by four, now nail it to the floor, bam! If I were not a peer leader, I'll tell you what I'd be. If I were not a peer leader, a grease carp driver would be me. And as you pass me by, this is what you hear me cry. I'm driving down the lane, totally insane. I'm driving down the lane, totally insane. Two by four, now nail it to the floor, bam! Two by four, now nail it to the floor, bam! If I were not a peer leader, I'll tell you what I'd be. If I were not a peer leader, a granny would be me. And as you pass me by, this is what you hear me cry. Don't cry, I'm so high, come get me and kiss me, come on! Don't cry, I'm so high, come get me and kiss me, come on! Driving down the lane, totally insane. I'm driving down the lane, totally insane. Two by four, now nail it to the floor, bam! Two by four, now nail it to the floor, bam! Woo! 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 Woo!
I think he's done so much to build the culture.
It's great.
Yeah, so cute. They tweeted me some, they sent me some pictures for our Facebook page.
Oh, nice. And a website, maybe.
Was the puppy?
It must have been a puppy. Well, he's not a puppy, yeah.
Oh, good.
John, that was very good. Google Doc. You know all about that now?
Oh, heck no. I know I have to learn because that's where everything is going to be, that I've got to dig up for the superintendent's evaluation. But, no, I'll be yelling for help, believe me. And it won't be the first time. Okay, boy, no disrespect to anybody else on the agenda, but how do you follow that?
Yeah.
And with that, our student representative report. Madison, Happy New Year, welcome back.
Sorry to say I don't have a dance. I do have a few highlights. We haven't been in school much since our last meeting due to break and a couple of snow days. But I have a few highlights. To start, we've had some excellent concerts, musical concerts. The chorus and orchestra recently performed "The Messiah", which is a really great concert. The band recently had a concert as well. And the band director, Mr. Kingsland, was recognized by Representative Keating. The orchestra also recently had their Trans-Siberian Orchestra Tribute Concert, which was at the Zeitarian. And it featured the original TSO violinist, Mark Wood. It was a lot of fun to play in, and I'm sure it was a lot of fun to be at as well. We also have our students currently registering to take their AP exams in this coming spring. So far, we've had eighty-five students registered for more than a hundred and thirty exams. We also have fifty-five students competing at DECA this week, at a DECA competition. And they're going to Hyannis. The high school will also be hosting a showcase evening for the members of Dartmouth's current eighth graders. And I'm pretty sure that it's to show them around the high school and what it's like. This Thursday evening, we are having our final scene night for our theater art class. Final scenes will start at 6:00 PM in the Dartmouth High Auditorium. And we'd like to give a big thanks to our custodial staff for removing the snow and prepping the parking lots and sidewalks after this huge blizzard that we just had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Good. Moving on to new business, an overview of our Department of Public School Arts program. Mrs. Cronin.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the invite. This was fun to put together. I have some invitations for you later, too. Okay, I have a PowerPoint, so I can see pretty well. Just have to make sure. Sometime I'm technologically challenged as well. So, yes, so I'm here on behalf of K through twelve, our visual arts program. We looked and we met as a group and talked about what to put in this. And we looked at our district's vision, and we felt that we really connect with the partnership with the community and parents. We do a lot of that. As well as base all our learning on standards and have a high level of expectation with rigor. Also, we don't only cover academic learning, but also social and emotional. As well as, we would like to pride ourselves on creating real-life experiences for learning, that they can really see what it's like, and to fail, and to gain, and to work hard. If you look at Reggio Emilia's philosophy of education in Italian based, it's usually for early childhood, they always call the environment the third teacher. So, creating those situations for learning really helps kids. Actually, under core values and beliefs that all, we would like our kids to earn responsibility and respect for others, just like the Quinn kids just did with respect. Not only others, but themselves, as well as their environment, whether that be the studio and the school or outdoors. Also, developing that work ethic. Now, personally, I believe, and I think all my teachers believe, that it's not just this talent that's dropped on your head when you're born. It's that skill building and that work ethic. I mean, some people start out a little ahead, but everyone can learn if you have that work ethic. Also, really, teachers are good facilitators of finding those talents and those abilities and creating that passion. If you have that passion for learning, you want to ignite that, whether it be in music, the arts, accounting, and really build on those strengths. As well as, we have written visual and oral communications that we usually incorporate in most of our lessons to tell either the student's story or someone else's story. So, just a little history. In 2009, Dr. Russell was our superintendent at the time. And it's funny because we were all so proud of our art show in the library. And it was very cluttered in the library, and other people wanted to use the library. But we were like ready to show it off to Dr. Russell. And he said, "You should move this in the gym. It would be so much better." And we're like, "Oh, my goodness, what are we thinking?" But anyway, that's how we went to the Carlin Lynch Activity Center. And it seemed like such a big thing. All those, you know, most of you have all been to the art show. We had slip-covered every bookcase in the library, and sewn all those. And then we approached folk, and we made all those, I don't know, we have like ninety panels, and slip-covered all those. And the kids were involved, and all the teachers. And it's really grown so much in that short period of time. And then in 2011, we began working as a pre-K through twelve team, which was the greatest thing to do. It's just amazing how everyone has grown so much, whether it's the high school teachers with the elementary teachers. And it's really changed, I think, philosophy, teachers' philosophies. Elementary teachers didn't come in with thinking assessment was a big deal. And now they're like, they're looking at to say, "Okay, what do I want these kids to learn?" So, it really has been a great experience. So, here's a drone shot from Mr. Paradi of the art show from last year. And then we were talking about the elementary curriculum. And the teachers agreed it was based on skill building and expression. You know, you can put in skills. They're not the highest thing. It's more about kids expressing what they're meaning and pulling in the skills at the same time, as well as communication. And then also collaborating, that they all have a common goal to work together. And they've had a big drive to uphold the ELA Common Core and build in vocabulary that articulates each grade, as well as incorporating writing. And on the right, there's an example. You can't really see it that well. But it's a lesson they did based on a Van Gogh's "Starry Night". And the kids would write their impression. It's almost like a little self-assessment. So, they're partnering with the classroom teacher sometimes. And sometimes it's in art class. And they've put aside, they only meet limited amounts of hours throughout the year. But it shows the importance of that communication piece, both visual as well as written. So, here's a little clip from Potter School with another example from "Starry Night". And Mrs. Netto is our art teacher at Potter School. And they're doing a little bit of rug time for their launch of their lesson, this image. At Potter, she puts together a featured artist. It's in a little showcase, and anyone's welcome to. I guess it's almost like apply or come forward. And then I went with Mr. Paradi. We took some photos and some videos. And then there's some student work down on the right, observational drawing with color, which I thought was really impressive. Yeah. And then they did another unit. Again, there's some written self-assessment on that, some washout paintings with Van Gogh sunflowers. So, they're tying together art history, skill building, the art skills, as well as your ELA skills. So, here's some images. The kids were so excited to have their pictures taken. Working in the classroom. Here's a little video of one of our Potter School kids.
We learned about lines, and we are painting in the line. We made diagonal lines and much more lines.
Trees on our paper. And then today, we're going to paint them. And then next week, when you come back, we're going to...
My favorite artist is Mrs. Netto because she always does a lot of cool stuff.
What really impressed me at Potter School was, at the end of the lesson, they all worked together to clean up. It was so, I mean, they just couldn't wait to clean and scrub the tables. It was great. Then we have DeMello School, and we have Tara Kotojo is our teacher there. And as you can see, even in the image on the left, Tara's there in the middle. And she utilizes the smartboard in her classroom a lot, and pulls up examples, and is working with the kids with that. And they did lots of self-portraits. There's some images, self-portraits, and landscape. It's funny, I'm teaching a landscape unit right now with our two kids. And it's the same principles, and they can be challenged at any age level. I mean, I'm challenged when I do a landscape after forty years of art. And we go on to Quinn School. We have Mrs. Racine, and here's some of her students. And there's Anne Marie up at the board. And you can notice all the vocab words, again, upholding that Common Core piece. And at Quinn, they've done a lot of work with integrating with the classroom teacher, with the writing, as well as, you know, with the visual part. So, this was a few grade levels. And as you walk into the school, you can see them posted along in the hallway of their self-portraits along with their writing pieces. And then here's, this is a younger grade level. They're working with color, and color is expression. And they have, again, they've written in some of their feelings about their colors in their self-portraits.
We made this in Quinn School art class. It represents who we are. All the colors of the rainbow represent how people are different and cool in their own unique ways. Our hand is a symbol of how we can believe in ourselves. We made this so people can believe and trust in ourselves. Because if we were all the same, then we wouldn't be able to express our art. Quinn School!
And again, I shot this with my phone, and it was out in the front lobby. We took, it only took ten minutes. They just knew just what to say. They were so excited to go out. It was just two kids pulled from the art class that day. They were wonderful. Then we go to the middle school, where we have Beth. I hope Beth doesn't mind about this image. It's her sports image, but that's what Beth is. And she's focusing at middle school on problem solving and also developing that vocabulary, which we've been working on in our PLCs. Personalizing instruction, so kids are really captured and motivated, as well as differentiated instruction. So, everyone has, you know, all goals can be reached in whether your goal's here or here. So, everyone's needs are met. You can see, these are some things I just shot in the classroom. Over to the right are vocab boards that are arts-based, color schemes, elements and principles of design. And the middle, they were doing a nice lesson based on their favorite candy and pulling in their candy with graphic design skills, compositional skills and color skills, as well as skills of painting and brush control and things like that. So, they can really inject who they are into their different assignments. And here's some student work. This was a good example of brainstorming and that whole problem-solving process. They had to develop a personalized symbol. So, they had to look at things that were important to them, attributes, traits, and then work out the visual problem of color theory, elements and principles of design, and how you arrange things, which is really high-level as well. And here's a photo of some of the kids working on their projects in class. And it's funny, you go to the middle school, and it's all girls and all boys. They don't really mix so much at the tables, so I said I'd better put a girl picture in. There's a girl picture. Then we go up to the high school. We offer twenty-six different classes through Unified Arts. And it's really broken down into the visual arts. And then we have the early childhood program, as well as the video program, who you get to see in action each school committee meeting. And those are all our different courses. And then, this was a picture we just took this morning and sent an email out. And I added up, we have a hundred and forty-eight years of teaching at the high schools. Our department, I mean, we're like the senior people. I remember when I was like the new teacher. And although we have two newer ones. And I think it's not just years of teaching, but it's years of passion. Even with all those years, you know, teachers in this department, they come in and they're psyched every day to see their students. And they love what they do. Again, that passion thing is so important, especially at the high school level, where you have a lot of influence on the kid's next step in college. And that's the best advice. Do something you love. Then it's not work. So, that's introducing all of us. So, we have PLCs probably twice a month, once to twice a month. And our focus, and that goes not just high school, but K through twelve. This year has been a lot on formative assessment. And we've been working on something called the Single Point Rubric as a formative assessment, as well as our summative rubrics. And with those two types of rubrics, incorporating a lot of peer critique and self-assessment. So, this is a real good example of even collaboration and peer critiques. This was a collaborative project that one class worked on. And this is, you know, there's not enough room in the classroom, so we go out in the hallway. And kids are looking at that work critically to try to raise that bar, to improve it. So, here's some other images. It wasn't exactly this project, but it was a portrait project, that they're all given the Single Point Rubric. And they have to go look at one of their classmates' work and critique it. And they're looking at the learning goals, and they write down something that's really strong about the work and something that might need some, I don't want to say improvement, but some growth. And then they share that. So, this was that process, and they take it quite seriously. And it's done in writing, as well as a verbal sense as well. And here's some examples of what would happen from that. As, you know, we might do that two or three times. And in the art world, they call it a critique or a crit. So, this is both oral as well as written. But you can see how this student's work just improved right along the right way. You know, and this is from her peers. And it's the best thing for a teacher to listen to when kids say, "Well, you need to increase the value on the light sources." So, they're using all the vocab. They're helping one another. And when you can teach something, that means you really understand it. So, that's what we all strive to do. So, there's a lot of collaboration that goes on. And here's some other examples. These were the finished pieces of the self-portraits. And the kids, these are large. You'll see them in the art show. They are so proud when they finish them. So, I started, I was finishing this up today. We offer, we have the opportunity with both the community, as well as our leaders, to offer so many real-life learning opportunities in our district. Tomorrow, I have invitations for you. We have an AP opening for the digital, AP Digital Show. We offer a spring show with the other AP class. And that's in conjunction with the Dartmouth Historical Arts Society. We also participate, they call it the TAPE Program. It's Teen Artist Internship Program with Artworks. Artworks has also merged with the Bedford Art Museum, so it's one entity now. And what that program is, our high school kids work with local artists, one-on-one, and they set up their time. It might be five o'clock on Thursdays. It's whatever is convenient, so that all kids can participate. And it's funded through the different cultural councils of all the different communities. And it culminates in a show at the Bedford Art Museum where they work collaborative. They work, well, they don't work on one piece. They work on their own work, but they show the artist's work, as well as the teen artist's work. And we've been participating in that since the inception. I think it's been about fifteen or sixteen years. And they're chosen. They have to apply. And it's almost like a little mini-college thing. They have to put in their work and write a statement. Also, the next one is our Allstate, which, that's pretty longstanding. I was here the first year. I think it's about twenty-seven years. It used to be at the Worcester Art Museum. It's now at UMass Dartmouth. Dartmouth High School, we all serve as an interview site. And what that is for is all high school juniors that are contemplating a career in the arts are welcome to apply. They have to submit three pieces of artwork. They have to write, you know, like a statement of intent and answer questions. And then they have to sit before a panel of arts teachers and be interviewed. So, it's very much like the whole college thing. And then they meet on a weekend, and like I mentioned, it's now at UMass Dartmouth. And they work with professional artists. They do installations. And it really is about collaboration more than art. It's not like to say, "Oh, I draw, I paint." They have to work together. And Mrs. Doe was here just this evening and mentioned her daughter Caitlin. You know, she's a counselor now. And she said, "You know what was a turning point was that Allstate." And she did that because she was a quiet little kid, and she came out, and she was so different after that experience. So, I thought that was kind of nice. We also are, we participate in Emerging Young Artists, which is a statewide juried show now at UMass Dartmouth, which that opening will be in February. And it's highly competitive. This year, they had like nine hundred entries, and I think they're putting eighty-one pieces in. We got a piece in, one of our photos. We also, this year, we've done a lot of work. And I know Rob talked a little bit about it with the Sister City Project, with the Plymouth Four Hundred. And that collaboration turned very big because, at first, it started with Cindy Marlin in Sister City, and then it branched off to the Wampanoag Tribe at Aquina. And then we contacted Martha's Vineyard High School. They provided transportation when we were over there. And we met up with Martha's Vineyard art students, as well as the teachers, and went around and did photography and video. So, it just kept blossoming. Also, we did last, in the spring, we did Drug Story Theater with the Zeitarian. Myself and another teacher, we went to the Opioid Summit. And from there, worked with developing prayer flags for, to hang the day of the Drug Story Theater. And the kids, there were wishes or prayers for people that were either struggling with addiction or family members or whatnot. And it was, it was great because they learned how to make paper. They learned all their art concepts, but there was a really strong concept behind it. That was a message. And, you know, things, you know, it's a way of expressing and expressing themselves and expressing things they might normally not express. We partner with UMass Dartmouth for Figure Drawing Club for kids that really want to go beyond what we can offer at the high school. We do lots of college visits. They come right into the classroom. They do critiques for admissions for college. We also go visit colleges, too. This year, we started a cooking show with Ms. Lonnie from the middle school. And kids loved doing it. It was great using DCTV's facility. We also do, we have one articulation with BCC, where kids can earn up to six credits in the early childhood program. And on the burner, that's my goal for this year, is to get the visual arts one in place for a drawing and painting class because we do have a number of kids that do go to that transfer program through BCC, as well as a video articulation. So, it's in the works. And then, again, the DCTV partnership, which we've worked with them for a number of years. Here's one other partnership. This was the Schoolhouse Project. Most people are probably familiar. We've been doing it for quite some time. It started small with DeMello School and Kathy Messini. And it's blossomed into every third grader going to visit, and, you know, the nineteenth-century schoolhouse down in Russell's Mills. And they see what a day would be like. And it's linked in with their history frameworks, the local history. And it's a great experience for the third graders. It's a wonderful experience for our high school students. They actually do a smartboard presentation and go visit the classrooms before the visit. So, that takes care of the method students, the early childhood, lower-level class. And then the other kids become really performers. So, they have to understand everything to be able to teach it. So, they do units in calligraphy. They do weaving, yarn spinning. They do games and toys of that era, and then they do a classroom reenactment. And Polly Gilbo works with all her students to do that. They dress in period costume. So, it's really, it's an exciting day. And Sukaducci from the Dartmouth Historical Arts has been hugely supportive with all that. Here's an image of the prayer flags at the Zeitarian, you know, for the opening of Drug Story Theater. So, actually, we made them on handmade paper. And they were, they looked really beautiful. That was like a nice shot. It looks on Broadway, doesn't it? And then we also do lots of real-life learning in the sense of art analysis and field trips. Each class does a whole unit. They do a writing. They do an art analysis part. I guess, I don't know, if I wouldn't actually call it a paper. I guess an essay, that they look at elements and principles of design, and they analyze for content, as well as skills. And they go... And they go to different museums. Our one goes to the Rhode Island School of Design Museum, our two goes up to the MFA, and we all culminate in a New York trip. Now, this is at the Cloisters, which is part of the Metropolitan in New York, and that's a medieval museum. And this is a docent talking about that night. Again, they have a chapel that they reconstructed, reconstructed from a chapel in Spain right there, and those are the kids, our kids waiting to go in. And this is the cloister outside where they had all the herbs, the medicinal herbs. This was our trip last year, we went to the observatory for nine eleven, you're looking down at the nine eleven memorial, we went to the Freedom Tower. We went to Little Italy for dinner, we went to the Met, we saw a nice fashion show, they saw Van Gogh's self-portrait. And then we do a Broadway musical as well. So, here's some examples of, you know, an upper-level portfolio class in front of a Chahuli glass piece at the MFA. There's the cooking show with Mrs. Launey. Some of the digital photo classes went to the aquarium this year and did a lot of photos based on sea life, which is, was really exciting. Here's some images from the interview at the Wampanoag headquarters in Aquina. Elizabeth's over on the right. When we get the video all finished, you'll get to see it. That's getting off the ferry and those are all video, kids involved with that. And then we also have the opportunity for our students to excel. Here's just some data based on our AP scores over the last three years. I have noted, we, I've broken it down, we offer three AP exams. One is drawing, one is two-dimensional design, and one is three-dimensional design. We broke off the two-D design to let the kids do a completely photo portfolio, just because photo is a little bit different mindset than drawing and painting and they can actually move through it a little faster. So, it's actually, this year it's a semester course, it's always been a semester course. So, I've broken it down into AP Digital and then the two-D design. And those are our average scores and the number of exams. And as you can see, the AP Digital class has really expanded. There's, last year nineteen exams were taken, this year we have twenty-two kids. So, see how many take exams, and they've done really well. To get an average score of four is huge. As well as our two-D design and our drawing, they, you know, have, they work really hard and that work ethic really pays off when you learn about building a skill and we use, you know, the analogy of Michael Jordan, just because he's the best basketball player doesn't stop playing basketball. You always have to work to maintain that level.
I'm here today with, well, how has the art program in Dartmouth helped you?
I think it really helped me, like, harness my creativity and it introduced me to a lot of people who can really influence me in positive ways. I think that the teachers have been really awesome and, like, helping me create more and in a better way, and I think that just generally, it's been really awesome.
So, do you plan on pursuing an art career outside of high school?
Oh, definitely, I want to be an illustrator and along with my portfolio that's been so greatly guided by Dartmouth schools. I actually got recently accepted into Mass Art, so that's really great.
Awesome, congratulations.
And then to close, I have one more video, but I'd like to point out, you know, we can prepare kids for school for art and they've had successful and great careers. You know, we've been, like you said, it's been over thirty years and the stories are wonderful, and we'll share one story, but it's also for people that love art for that sake. And it's something that, it could be a hobby, expression, or, you know, they just enjoy it. So, it's not all about pushing, we don't want, you know, not every, everyone has artists in them, but you don't need to be employed to do that. So, this, this one last video is, it's kind of, when I started teaching, my mentor was Gabrielle Giblin, who is like a second mother to me. And I brought over, I have a video from a student of mine, he was, it was my first year teaching. And Gabby and I did a lot of teen teaching, so I brought the video over to her and she was crying listening to it, it was just really nice. So, I'd like to share this, it kind of embodies what we all, it's a little long, so I apologize for that, but it's embodies what we're trying to do for kids.
Hello, I'm Steve Tatro, class of eighty-eight, Dartmouth High School. The arts program in Dartmouth schools has really, really shaped my life in pretty, pretty dramatic ways, actually. I knew that art classes for me in middle school and in high school were always a, it was sort of a refuge in a way. Like, I was an athlete, I was involved in, in sports, I was, you know, academically a good student across the board, you know, was in, was in various programs, gifted programs and so forth. But the one thing that really meant something to my life at that time was, was art and, and creating art and learning, learning about it, being encouraged to, to explore it more. And I think that all came to, it reached its peak my senior year at Dartmouth High. My junior and senior years were very, very influential for me. At that time was Gabrielle Giblin and a, and a very young Miss Judy Baker. I remember coming to art class and just, and just having the desire to create and, and learn through, through creating. Those who are interested brought us to New York City to be exposed, to be exposed to it and to bring us to FIT and explore the schools there. And that's where I went to school, that's where I ended up, at Fashion Institute of Technology and got a four-year degree there, became a graphic designer, had my own design company for a while, and, and then started a company called Gig Salad, which is a, it's a place to book entertainment online. But that's, that's what I'm doing and have been doing that for about thirteen or fourteen years now. And the reason I started it was, I mean, it was based on design, that was my contribution. So, I'm a co-founder, my partner was into the, into entertainment booking, so we put our heads together and, and we created this. And it's, and we employ, we have about thirty people in our team and we, you know, have millions of users and, and all that good stuff. So, it's, it's, it's a success story. But really, the success is in, I can absolutely trace it back to being, to being cared for through artistic expression. Because I could have become a lot of things and I knew that this is the one thing that really, it really, you know, sort of steered my world and gave me, and energized me, so. I, I remember also, a guy named John, Jonathan Sylvia, I'll speak on, on his behalf, just because I witnessed something that I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out where it was coming from, but certainly, you know, my, my art instructors saw something more than I did. But John Sylvia, I didn't think was really into art. He was in my class and he was, he was talented, but I didn't think he was really into it, but he was encouraged to, he was also encouraged and he, he went along in that New York trip and he was, and he was accepted into FIT in jewelry design. And that just blew my mind, but he ended up, he didn't go there, but he ended up getting his master's at Yale in fine art and, and that was, you know, now he teaches fine art and he also, what a great success and what a great story. But it was because of the, of that nurturing and that care that our, that the art program showed us. And I don't know, I, I don't know where I would be today without it, to be quite honest. I imagine I could have carved out my own paths in some way and figured it out, but just to know that it was encouraged at that time was really super meaningful for me and for many others I know. So, anyway, yeah, keep it rockin'.
Well, Steve lives in North Carolina and he just sent that, you know, I texted him and said, "Well, do you want to, Mike, you probably remember Steve Tatro."
I sure am.
So, he just sent that up and it was like, "Oh," you know? We just answered the question on how the arts program has affected your life, so I thought that was kind of nice. So, that's what we have to share now and anyone's welcome to come visit anytime you'd like. And I'd like to pass out, you can take some and pass them down. And we utilized our new camera, our three-sixty camera that the parent group paid for, that's right on the invitation right here.
Oh, nice, yeah.
So, I'd like to thank everyone for inviting, thanks.
Any questions?
I'm, I'm an art major myself and I, and this is just exciting, I love the art show every year. And I'm so excited to see my youngest sort of budding and with that natural talent. Life took me another way, but my high school, not, I'm not from Dartmouth, but I can really relate to what you're saying of how your, your students are inspired and encouraged and really build their own self-worth and excitement for learning and, and all of what, what the art department is doing and tying in the curriculum and really ties into that personalized learning and it's just beautiful and I love, love seeing the, the high-level talent that the students.
Thank you.
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. I'm extremely pleased to see that the elementary pre-K through twelve are working together and building this program so that it builds each year and you all have a direction that you're going in. There was just so many different things I jotted down, but one of the things is certainly the ability, the arts really help us develop that creative side to look at problems in different ways. And it's such a valuable experience for them, not only if they do, as you say, go into art or into other areas. And then when I think back to nineteen eighty-eight, I can't remember much of it, but I do, I do remember that funding was very tight during those years and I'm so proud that Dartmouth was able to maintain their art program. A lot of other schools weren't, they were taking out the arts and music, but we were able to maintain that. So, these wonderful stories can be told. I also know of several other graduates from your program who have done extremely well. So, thank you for all your work on this for the past thirty-three years. It's a great program, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What else can I say? I echo the comments of my colleagues. I always enjoy seeing the art shows every year. I've been going for many years since my kids were young now and I just love seeing all the, the art, the, right across from kindergarten all the way up through, you know, high school. And I'm actually, I just took, when you, when you brought up Gig Salad, I just happened to look on my laptop here. What an, what an amazing website and what a very talented person that came from Dartmouth High School. So, it's just great to see all the opportunities that our students have here and just to keep up the good work, so thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you, thank you for all the support. We couldn't do it, it takes the whole team, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Fantastic, I mean, and again with like my colleagues, I mean, I think about the art night and the art show and everything else and.
You're at every one.
And going to them and it is, you know, you and, and you and I have talked several times, I think they're all winners and I mean that seriously and you, you know, someone's got to come, somebody's for a second. How they pick them, I have no idea, but, you know, they're all fantastic, the job that these students do, you know? You know, and now that, and the elementary and middle is incorporated into it, it's great to see that. It was interesting and I appreciate the slide on the, the AP, the college credits and everything else and, I mean, are those, they get those credits, I mean, if they go to FIT or MFA, they can walk in there with those three, six, nine, twelve credits type of deal?
And they're applied in different ways, different schools have different rules, but even if it's, you know, a student, I know my own daughter did the AP Digital Photo and she's an early childhood major, she was able to use three credits toward an elective. So, it works either way, some kids can get six credits and it depends on what they traded out for. It is a great opportunity.
Fantastic, that's, thank you, thank you very much and thank you to all your teachers.
I'll pass the word.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next under new business is the FY nineteen, FY twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan draft, Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Going to be hard to be as exciting as what we've seen already tonight. So, this is the five-year capital improvement plan, this is the draft for your review and for discussion tonight. The FY nineteen recommendations that we've put together for your review include technology hardware. So, for the last, I believe, eight years, I believe, one year before I came on board here, we began funding two hundred thousand dollars a year for technology hardware to modernize our equipment. And this is an ongoing process and basically what we do is we buy equipment and cycle it through the system, take old equipment and move it to other places where it could be used in a more effect, in a more effective way, and we continue that process. At this point, we've gotten to the point where the town has built those, those funds into the budget. They're not actually a cap, they're not funded separately like most other capital improvement requests are, they're actually built into the, into the budget. So, we anticipate that they'd be supportive of continuing to do that and it's, it's critical. I mean, we can't get behind, especially, I mean, two hundred thousand dollars doesn't go as, as, in some ways, as far as, as it once did, but then on the other hand, we've been able to utilize some things like we're using Chromebooks now to a great extent, which are fairly inexpensive thankfully. So, we're, we're keeping up with our needs and getting ready for assessments and online assessment. So, it's critical to continue to do that. The second item on our list is the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium Synthetic Turf Field and Lighting Project, so we've talked a bit about this in the past. It's been on the capital improvement plan now, I think, at least five or six years. We have a committee of which Mr. Oliver is a member with Mr. Mickelson from the Select Board and Mr. Tattlebaum from the Finance Committee, who are currently, you know, have, have defined some goals and done some research and we're currently seeking an architect to help us with a study of that facility. The ad went into the, into the newspaper and online and on the state level on the third, January third, and we're expecting proposals back January nineteenth. We'll begin to, to evaluate those proposals and hopefully find somebody that, that we can work with. We'll have to bring it back to you actually for, even though, even though this is for kind of a, sort of a town committee, it is, we, we, being the school committee and school department, will be responsible for the, the whole procurement process and awarding a contract to a, to an architect. So, I'll be bringing that back to you, hopefully a recommendation on February twelfth.
Great.
So, it's exciting. The timeline for that is going to be really, really tight, given, given everything else we have to, to do at this time of year too and the budget, not, not the least of which, I guess. So, the third item on the list is boiler retrofit and replacement at Dartmouth Middle School. So, one of the things that we've had in our plan for some time is to take a look at this. We were fortunate enough that the town stepped up and helped us with the Green Communities grant funding for the high school project. And we believe that the middle school project may be in line for the same type of, the same type of funding. So, this would actually not be, our hope is that this would not be funds that would come directly from the town and would, we actually wouldn't seek funds at town meeting, that we'd hopefully use the, the Green Communities grant for this. The high school one is, has been very successful. It is going to show up also in the FY nineteen budget, which I've been working on and you'll see someday soon, in February. There's significant savings that we're already seeing, and it's been very cold, but there is significant savings. So, it's a worthwhile project and, and the payback is, you know, is very quick on a project like that. So, we'd be looking at that as well. Then we have a very exciting project at the, the Media Center and Innovation Lab renovation project. So, that would be at the high school and also work at the middle school and the media centers renovating those facilities. We would be creating a innovation lab and we'd utilize, we'd, it would sort of be a partner. partnership between this project and the funding that we received from the workforce grant to, to outfit the lab and it would be, what we'd be looking at is in B two, which is the room next, next to, in the media center, next to, when you walk in, on the, on the left, which is a large room and create, which is now a conference room, we'd be looking at creating that into an innovation lab for students to use and it would be available to the whole school, it would be state-of-the-art technology and a workspace that would be a collaborative workspace for students to, to do a variety of projects and a variety of, of subjects. So it's very exciting and our hope is, is that we would not be asking for money at town meeting for that. So as part of this, as part of this proposal, we would ask that when you can consider approving this capital improvement plan, that you support us utilizing school choice funds as the source of revenue for that project. We think that it's, it would be a, a good use, it's not a recurring cost, these renovations, so it would be something that we think would be, you know, a great use of those school choice funds and it would support all students in the high school and some students in the middle school as well, so we're very hopeful that we can move forward with that project. And then the last thing on the 2019 list is some kitchen equipment replacement, so we have some, some freezers and other equipment that are really in dire need of, of replacement and we're stringing them together as best we can, so our hope is that we can, we can work that into the plan as well. So when we, when we consider that, we look at the plan as a whole, is $2,215,000 with a $1.4 million stadium project and $90,000 kitchen equipment being the only items that would be requested at town meeting as capital, as separate capital improvements being funded, we hope that there's a possibility that that can be achieved this year. So we've yet to talk to anyone but you about it, so we'll, as you know, the process is, is long, complicated. We go to the capital improvement, once, once you've had a chance to discuss it, review it, offer recommendations and ultimately vote, we go to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, likely the Finance Committee, possibly the Select Board, depending on how their, what their process looks like. So it's, it's a lengthy process, but I'd be happy to talk more about any of the proposals or any of the proposals in, in out-years as well, but that was a summary of the FY nineteen proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Kiley. I wonder if I make reading numbers? Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Kiley. So by the sounds of this, it looks like we'd really be going to the town for the 1.4 million in stadium renovations if what you're saying holds true, in which the 200,000 is already built into the budget, they put that aside. The boiler retrofit has come from Green Communities possibly, which is wonderful idea, wonderful project, it saves us money with high-efficiency heating. And then, what do we have right now in our school choice fund? What's the balance of that?
Well, so we are in the process of receiving our second year worth of school choice now.
Right, because it's a reimbursement.
Right, so the first year, we've received the $150,000. We're receiving $300,000 now gradually throughout the year, so by the end of the year, we'll have 400, $450,000. Now, we've committed to a few, a few small expenses to come from school choice funds, but nothing significant at this point. So it would be a great source of revenue that would have such a high impact on the high school and really be something that is totally different from what is currently offered and very innovative.
And it would be a great space to highlight some of the new equipment and the new
Absolutely.
Innovation lab.
And with that, as Mr. Kiley said, we had spoken to Laura Gardner at the middle school, was also interested in renovating the middle school library, more so with furniture and kind of creating little hubs, because she's, you know, the, if you've been in there lately, it's really old, heavy-duty furniture and to be able to move it, it's just not state-of-the-art, if you will, and she's got so much going on in that. So when we talked about the whole, the funds that we're waiting to receive for the Math Skills Grant and what we're doing with that, then expanding and doing the same kind of work in the high school library, so we said, that might be a good use of our school funds, the school choice money that, again, benefits so many students, so.
Agreed. I think the middle school library is up for
Yeah, and it might be, you know, this work could be like a two-year plan perhaps or whatever, so, yeah. It's interesting, we'll see.
Okay. So you know my feeling in which I, you know, I think we, we need to go after the stadium, you know, I think the architect that we're going to be bringing on board hopefully very shortly will give us some, a better idea and help us out along the way, but I, I think that's paramount to this school district and to this town that, that gets taken care of.
I think it's, it's great that it's moved along the way it has. Going back historically, would those figures fit in with what we usually get from capital funding?
So, that's a good question. So last year, the town approved one point, they approved $2.7 million of capital improvement planning funds, but that, a big portion of that was bonded through the, for the roof, but there was more than a million dollars outside of the roof that were, that was funded in terms of projects. So, yeah, I think it is. I think it's, I think it's realistic. I don't see a reason, it's, everything's a matter of priorities and how this project fits with, you know, with the, the overall town capital improvement plan, but it, it is reasonable to expect that it could be done if, if the will is there to do it.
Thank you for your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if they have any other questions, I just, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, excited about, about the turf field, really. I, I just feel that it would, you know, so much pride in, in what all of our students do, it's utilized by so many, but as it stands, it's, shall I say, slightly embarrassing, especially when you go to other facilities and see just the phenomenal, phenomenal spaces that they have. And the, just, it, it does look hopeful and reasonable to sort of hope that if everyone's on board that this could go through without a hitch. That techno, the, the, the innovation lab though, that just is incredible, talk about all students, you know, middle school, high school, all sorts of learning and innovative projects and collaborations. And that school choice money, that's exciting in that it's, like you said, it's sort of a, a one-time, it's not something that, it's not like staffing where you would say, ooh, we don't know if we're going to get that next year. It's a great way to utilize that, that money, a big chunk of that money. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled. I'll do the easy ones first. Between workforce grant and school choice funds for that media center and innovation lab, perfect use. I know we had talked about school choice again and, you know, one-time expenditures or, you know, capital items and things of that nature, that would be absolutely perfect. I wonder, and I'm going to go back to when we had the discussion earlier this school year, when we were talking about the middle school roof and the way the bids came in, and I'm just wondering instead of, you know, I mean, is they going, have you heard anything about a March town meeting that had been discussed, not by us, but by members of the Finance Committee and things of that nature earlier, polls taken, et cetera?
So, Mr. Nunes, I, I have heard about it, but I don't, I've not heard anything about them actually organizing it. Of course, it was an idea that was floated out there and I think was taken seriously and they had done some work on that and some polling and everything and, but to my knowledge, I've not heard anything about it and I think the timeframe now to organize a March town meeting would be very short, so I think it's unlikely.
Because that boy, that, you know, this is the one time, and I'm not sure if I was in favor of it or not, but, you know, if, you know, you get some of the, what was probably going to be excess roof bonding money and get it repurposed and that goes, you know, away and that, at that point in time, I just wonder if somewhere down the line, some, some of the smaller items from FY twenty can get moved in. Again, just, I'm just one of those that, you know, if you, if, if they gave us a dollar last year, I'd like to, you know, stick with the dollar and that way it's consistent across the board in that, you know, general vicinity, so.
I would love to have that opportunity to be able to, we, as, as you review the plan and take a look at it, there are a lot of items in FY twenty and beyond that we've sort of deferred to try and make this happen. And we had some discussion in the last couple of years about that, you know, taking that approach and saying, okay, can we put some things off so that we can get this done? Instead of continuing to talk about it year after year and not making any progress, so I think the, the committee that was put together was, has done a great job in advancing it and, and I think we're at that point where if we focus on this and try and make this a reality, then we will have done a good thing and a, a long-term improvement for the town and, as Mrs. Amrell said, you know, better reflect, I think, the values of, of our town and how we would want to be perceived and
I don't doubt that and at least there's the gentleman that sits up in that booth for announcing band and football games and you'll have eight or 10 pairs of, you know, sets of eyes trying to figure out what the outline of balls are on type of deal. I totally agree and, and again, with the band, they're out at different stadiums in different communities and, you know, they have these nice artificial lights, you know, artificial turf and fantastic lights, yeah, it, it would be very well, very well-used and appreciated, so.
If I, if I may interject as well, sitting behind that pole in the disabled, you know, seating with no lighting, I mean, it's just, I know that was just kind of put there at that time because we get the money, we, you know, however, yeah, to see that more thoughtfully.
Yep, absolutely.
Organized.
Yep.
Look forward to that.
That would be nice.
Okay, so we'll all take a look at this and be back on February twelfth. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Kiley. Next item, superintendent's update.
Well, as you know, we haven't had much schools, so the only thing I'm going to mention is I hope you all caught the new website and have taken a look at that, because as you know, that transitioned at the end and I happened to be texting Mr. Galishar and he said he sat up and watched it as one faded out and the other one faded in, so we'd like to really thank everybody, his department and everybody that's really been involved in, in getting that up and running. It's been a long time coming, but as you know, the information has to be transitioned as well, so a lot of folks have been working on that and more to come on that. And again, make sure folks download the app, go on the App Store and download the Dartmouth Public Schools app. And I also want to mention, of course, once again, thank our Maintenance and Custodial Department, I know you mentioned that, but as you know, the, this was quite the storm and with the ice underneath, et cetera, they really, they really work so hard, people just don't know how much they work, so we want to really thank them for that. And the only other thing we're going to mention is I asked Ms. Roy to talk about, just for a second, about the pre-K registration and how that's going to be shifting, so folks have an update, something to look forward to and what they'll be looking at. Oh, and also if, just to say for folks at home, if you didn't receive a call or an email or a text with, when we do the all calls, I know a couple of people did call, I'm just asking folks to call our office because sometimes there's, or even your school, you can check their emails, et cetera, there's glitches, sometimes they, they might have a wrong number or something, so make sure that, you know, don't leave it a secret, come to us and we can try to fix that. So with that, I'm just going to ask you to kind of talk about that.
Preschool?
Yeah, a little bit.
So we, we've been trying to streamline the preschool process a little bit because, as you know, we have more folks interested in attending the preschool than we have slots. So in the past, we've had them complete a full registration packet and, which is a tremendous amount of paperwork. So this year, we're going to streamline it a bit and have them fill out an application, which is basically a one, one-page component, gives us the information we need to set up the screenings and then conduct the lottery and when they are selected through our lottery process, the peer partners, then they will be invited to complete the online registration. So we just get the, we get the list of eligible three or four-year-olds from the town census and we're just beginning to put out the labels, so the letters will be going out end of January, beginning of February, and then the application window will stay open till about mid-March. And then we conduct the screenings at the end of March and they'll be notified if they've been selected through, the peer partners through the lottery system, probably toward mid to late April.
And this will all be on the website also?
Yes.
And that's it?
Now, when would you, I was going to ask, when will people be notified whether or not they are accepted into the program?
Probably after April vacation, based on the, you know, how quickly we can turn around the screening data.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Any, to my colleagues, anything that we haven't talked about that you have on your radar screen or anything of that nature?
I don't have anything.
Everybody's good? Got the Carol Fotis? Everybody's good? All right? Very good. I know Madison talked about it, but again, just my congratulations to the, to the orchestra and the alumni that returned and also the seventh and eighth grade students that participated in the TSO concert that was held at the Zeitarian, fantastic concert and, yeah, my thanks also to Mark Wood for taking time out of his schedule to, to come in and, you know, workshop with the students for a couple of days. I understand it went really well. Madison, you?
He added a lot to the program and stuff, it was so great to work with him, yeah.
How is he, how does he interact with the students and teach and that type of deal?
I think, well, it's really a collaboration between him and Mrs. Monty and Ms. Church for the orchestra concert and he really works with the orchestra and their sound quality and stuff and like everybody that works with them, so the band and the drummers and all that stuff.
Super, super-duper. That was great. Also too, one thing, we all got an email from Dr. Jenkins regarding the Bristol Laggie issue type of deal. I for one am not, you know, pleased with that, the way that's gone down and
Kind of blindsided. Kind of blindsided.
Oh, very much so and, you know, can we just, you know, I mean, maybe we ought to just be able to, you know, too bad we just can't do that with all us improvements that we want to do and that, that type of deal, but it, you know, I for one am not, and the funny thing is, is I look at, you know, who's on, and I know all the gentlemen that are on that, you know, board and, you know, if I ever get my chance to talk to them, I will very politely and gentlemanly tell them how well it was that they weren't, you know, in this day and age of everybody wanting to be transparent, there was none at all, so.
Yeah, I don't know if that was an afterthought or what it was to, but that was just not enough time.
Not enough time at all.
At all.
At all, after a blizzard.
Right.
Okay, so with all due respect, there, there's times and places and that was neither, so, but that's my two cents on the item. Okay, that being said, our next meeting, Madison?
Is February twelfth.
Right here at 6:30. That being said, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Dr. Carol Fotis on a motion and a discussion. Chair, hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Have a good evening, everyone, please drive safe.